I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, the New Jersey Open Public Board of Education Act is going to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance to the provision of this act, the Rivadel Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date time in place thereof sent to the record, town news, and/or Star Ledger newspapers, the constituent borough clerks and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school districts' principals' offices, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking of tobacco is strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere in school grounds, including but elevated to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will subject to a fine not to exceed $100. Roll call. Claudia?
Here.
Patrick?
Here.
Al?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Tony?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Alan?
And Joe?
Here.
Also? Matt?
Here.
Robert?
Here.
And Carrie?
Here.
Doug, would you mind reading the mission statement, please?
The mission of the Rivadel Regional School District is to provide a state student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and ever-changing world, to continue, involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students with opportunity to achieve and exceed the Common Core standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum content standards.
Thank you. And now, if there are any public comments on the agenda items only, there will be another chance, which hopefully some of you guys after the presentation will stick around for the rest of the meeting, but you'll have an opportunity for any comments other than on agenda items. So if there's any comments for agenda, seeing as there are none, then we're going to go right into our presentations. First one, our athletic director, Mr. Dennis Nelson. Dennis, I'll give you the floor. You might come up and then...
The athletic department is grateful for the Board of Education providing this opportunity for us to recognize, honor, and celebrate our girls volleyball team, who this past fall season won the Group II State Championship.
Thanks.
The state championship for the volleyball team was the third in school history and the second in four years. Along the way, the girls had a very exciting home match with Caldwell, which they won 2-1. That's one of those that I will never forget for the rest of my career. From there, they went down to Barnegat and defeated the Bengals 2-0 to win the state sectional title. That advanced them to the Group II final against Ramapo, which was played at South Brunswick, and they won that 2-0, and they were crowned the Group II state champs for that victory. It was a great season, and at this time, I'd like to call up head coach Diane Furisawa and assistant coach Ichii Furisawa to help me distribute the gifts for the state champions. Meredith Arancio? Meredith Curlin? Grace Kelly? Krista Passaretti? Rachel Jacobs? Nicole Kim? Lauren Messing? Christine Woods? Andrea Antel? Shannon Buckman? Emilla Danilowicz? Jenny Desplat? Cassie Kay? One last time, ladies and gentlemen, the Group II New Jersey State Champions for girls volleyball, Rivadel Golden Hawks.
Congratulations.
Turn around, take a minute, let Mom and Dad get pictures. We have plenty of time to do that, so you can look out that way.
I will be hard pressed to make...
back because the boys indoor track team during this past winter season won the Group II State Championship also. And today, we did find out that the Star Ledger, newjersey.com, named Mike Erso the Track Coach of the Year.
Well, you are almost a star.
Make the motion before they go. It's not the volleyball, but they're still a star.
So when you would report that there were like 40 people here, and then, do we get an average? Do we average, average per minute type of?
We put in there that we took a break while they all left.
Oh, okay. Well, with that, one thing I just would ask Mr. Nelson, too, they did put the banner up, which I was actually kidding Coach Furisawa one time at a basketball game, because it did seem like there was no room, but they actually found some room, moved some stuff around, and all through the banners up. Finding some room over on the boy side for the track would be pretty good, though, because there was a little bit of extra room, because girls rule. Sorry, guys. With that, moving on to the fiscal year 2015-16 budget. Patrick, Tom?
As Tom goes up to the mic, this is my favorite presentation of the year because I get to say, "Tom, take it away."
Would you? Oh, wait a minute, I could... Tom, make sure you know what camera you're on. They enjoy this. They enjoy this. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Tom Badfiglio, the Business Administrator for Rivadel Regional. Happy to present the 2015-16 budget, for which this is the first of two presentations, the tentative one tonight and the final one on April 27th. What generally goes into a school budget is a little bit different from the private industry budget, and what we have here tonight is the synopsis of work that began in the month of September. Our Board of Education has had this entire budget in what we call an pared-down version after the subcommittee of the Board of Education budget has reviewed it, and now it's time to present it. The process, as I mentioned, does begin in September, so while you think that children just getting back into school and everything is just beginning, that, too, is when the process starts formally, put the budget in motion. Paperwork that begins with the administrators starts at that point, and it's what we call a zero-based budget, bottom-up. If departments of social studies, art, media, and so on need things, they justify them in writing and therefore send it up to the principals. The period of time that begins in September to the time it hits the principals is approximately two months. Brings us into the month of November. Principals then review it to make sure that it makes sense, vet it, and then pass it up to my office, along with the superintendents. At that point in time, what happens is that I review it, make sure that it is financially sound, and what we do is put it in what we call an all-in budget. Every request that is made by the teachers, by the administration, superintendent, and myself are put in, and at that point in time, what we have is an all-in budget because we're looking at numbers. It has been vetted academically, it has been vetted for personnel, and so on. In education, when you do a budget, it's a revenue against expense type of situation. You estimate what your revenues are going to be, and that's what we call the all-in budget. Your expenses, which are justified, is a number. Your revenues are a number, and a lot of times, the numbers don't equal. Your expenses are generally higher than your revenue, so that's when the process starts to start whittling down the expense side. But before we do that, let's take a look at our student population here at Rivadel. Chart before me shows since 2002 to October of 2014, just a few months ago, what the amount of children was at Rivadel Regional School District. That means resident enrollment. In 2002, there was 1,364 children. In October 14, there were 1,655 children, broken out in two ways, middle school being about 600 and high school being a little bit more than 1,000. But what you see here, the trend that was starting to go up, is starting to flatten out, if not decline. And what I can see going forward is the fact that that decline will be flattened out in about two years to about a total of 1,600, 1,500 kids, things along those lines, in the next two to three years. Well, what makes the budget work? Money. Okay? And part of the money is from the state of New Jersey, what we call state aid. The bar chart that you see before you shows that over the past several years, we've had almost $1 million up to the '09-'10 school year, but starting in '10-'11, we just received no state aid. And from that point forward, you can see we went from almost $1 million, million one, to $666,000. That's how much aid Rivadel Regional gets from the state of New Jersey, broken into a few categories, special aid, security, so on. But the point of it is that the district receives what they tell you, $666,000. But what many people don't realize is that the state of New Jersey takes out a portion of that state aid for funding for the School Development Authority, and in this case, it's a little more than $60,000. And Rivadel isn't the only school district that this happens to. Every school district in New Jersey has to give back a certain portion of their state aid to the School Development Authority. What does the School Development Authority do? When you have a referendum and you get money to offset the cost, that's the pot that this $60,000 and every other school district contributes to. What does it ultimately mean? That means for the '15-'16 school year, we're not getting $666 in cash, we're getting a little more than 605. Okay? So don't let it be said that Rivadel is getting the $666, we're not. It's going to be significantly less, as is every other school district in the state of New Jersey. So that's revenue side. How does it look in a pie chart? Well, if we're getting state aid of $666,000 theoretically, where does the rest of the money come from? Here in Burton County and along many other school districts up here, we rely on taxes. So taxes make up 93% of our budget. I'm going to show you a little bit later what the total value of our budget is, okay? But we have tax levy, federal aid. What does federal aid mean? It means grants and other types of situations that bring in, such as IDEA, NCLB, and things like that. Tuition. Rivadel has a lot of programs that are unique, and therefore, we bring in children from other school districts and educate them. State aid, we talked about. Miscellaneous income. People who rent our facilities, they pay us a fee. And last but not least, surplus. There's a value that the state calculates that we must, at the end of the year, if we have it, give back to offset tax levy, and this year, it is $275,000. Okay. So if you have revenue, where do you spend the money? In every school district, not just Rivadel, the two biggest components of expenses are going to be salaries and benefits. With this pie chart, you can see that 56% of our budget of $32 million and benefits of 18% of that comprise 74% of the budget as already defined. 74% of $32 million. Three-quarters of the budget is that. Other areas. Debt service. When we had the referendum back in 2003, we borrowed a large portion of money. We pay it back, very similar to a mortgage. It will end in the year 2023, 2024. Utilities, lights, water, heat. We talked about benefits. Schedule B salaries, those are your coaches' salaries and drama club salaries and things along those lines. Transportation. We have limited service as far as regular ed, but we do have a lot of special education transportation. Capital outlay. The first time in about 12 years Rivadel has budgeted for capital outlay. What does that mean? It means that next year, we're going to be doing two projects. We're going to finish up the electrical upgrade at the middle school, and we're also going to do a refurbishment of the middle school library, somewhat to the one that was done here at the referendum, but now we're going to do it down at the middle school. That pie chart represents what the expenses are going to be for the 2015-2016 school year. As you can see here, the biggest, two biggest components, salaries and benefits. If you go to another presentation of any school district up here, you'll see the same We have of $32 million, $29,662,000 of it is for current expense. That is the daily running of the school. It is the salaries, it is the benefits, it's the textbooks, it's the periodicals, it's the heat. It is anything to run this school system on a day-to-day basis. We talked about capital outlay. Those two projects, exclusive of the money that we have to give back of the $60,000, is about $530,000 worth of capital projects that are going to be in the budget for next Debt service. Mentioned that the referendum was here in 2003, and we're paying it back. That payment for next year is almost $1.5 million. There's an asterisk there, I'll tell you what that means a little bit. Grants, $451,000. We talked about the IDEA, NCLB, and so on. The total budget going into next year is $32,197,760. Comparatively for '14-'15, the year that we're in right now, the budget's going up by 1.64%. Now, most years, you would see this number be a little bit higher, and the reason why it's under 2% is the fact that we've had numerous retirements that the Board has approved their resignations. We have had a total of eight retirements going into the 2015-16 school year, and then we had a total of two other people resign at the beginning of the 14-'15 school year. The difference between those people that are retiring and those people that we're hiring in as far as their replacements is called breakage. The difference of those higher salaries against the new people coming in at the lower salaries is the reason why the budget's going up only by 1.64%. The primary cause for that 1.64 deals into the benefit area, primarily the medical benefits. If you take a look at the expenses associated with '15-'16 versus '14-'15, there's almost $350,000 more in medical next year than in the current year now. The asterisk, what does it mean? Asterisk means that back in February of 2013, okay, almost two years ago, we refinanced the debt at a higher interest rate to a lower interest rate. It has nine years remaining, which means that we will get paid, we will pay off our debt service or our mortgage in 2023-24, and at the initial time, bless you, at the initial time that we refinanced, we would save the taxpayers over the remaining life of the debt, $1.2 million. Each year, about $100,000 comes off. Nine years, we've got about $991,000 that we will save or not ask for to repay the debt service at that higher rate versus the lower rate. All right. In the '15-'16 budget, what can we expect? Of the eight retirements, seven will be replaced. We're going to be adding a high school guidance counselor. We're going to add an additional school psychologist. And we're going to do those two capital projects that we spoke about previously. Now, this all came about because of what that term called "breakage." If there wasn't breakage, it would be unlikely that we could be doing these things. So this is what we'll have to look forward to for next year. We talked about the student population evening out or probably dipping a little bit. So that is just one of the variables that will either change for hiring or scheduling or things along those lines. What does this all shake out to? Well, when you deal with a regional school district, it could be two towns, three towns, four towns, it doesn't matter, it's more than one, that's the key to this, and when you have more than one, the total of the towns' percentages have got to equal 100% in order to pay for the taxes to take care of the schools. If you look at '12-'13, and you add the 48.1 and the 51.9, it's 100%. So if you use just simple numbers of a $10 million tax levy, at that point in time, $10,48.1 would be paid by Oradell and 51.9 River Edge. You understand the concept, but each year, it changes just a little bit, and the basic change as to why things change dramatically are what we call evaluations. When you have a reassessment, when somebody comes to your home and divvies up numbers and says, "Your house is worth X value versus Y value," in each one of the boroughs. If you look at '14-'15, the current year that we're in, it was 49.1 and 50.9. You can see that from '13-'14 to '14-'15, it changed by 0.5%. If one goes up by that value, the other one goes down. But look at '14-'15 compared to '15-'16. It's a dramatic change. It's 49.1 to 51.7, 2.6%. Now, what happens is, is that the state of New Jersey has a formula for every regional school district. They're the ones that make up the assessed valuation figures for the elementary, the assessed valuations for the high school, which is us, the enrollments for both the elementary and for the high school, and something called equalized evaluation. They put that into a formula that has been in existence for over 30 years, and it spits out these per-share values. So while Rivadel's budget only went up by 1.64%, which is extremely commendable, the percent change, share, changed dramatically from this current year, '14-'15, to '15-'16. Ultimately, what does it mean? We talked about what the total taxes were, which was 93% of $32 million. Ultimately, for next year, because of the percent change, a home valued in Oradell at $473,982 will be paying a little bit more than $354 more next year than this year. And conversely, in River Edge, a home valued at $383,478 will have a reduction in taxes of $133. So a question, a reasonable question would be, well, what if the percent shares didn't change that much? What would the numbers be? If they stayed flat from '14-'15 to '15-'16, the cost would be about $95 for Oradell and about $65 for River Edge, increase. That's what it would be. But because they changed 2.6%, these are the values that we're looking at for next year. So when you're trying to equate a budget going up, if it was going up by 5%, 6%, which is very unrealistic, versus 1.6%, which is very favorable, sometimes there's not a relationship between what you pay against what the numbers are, and this time, that's the unfortunate part. Okay? Patrick?
Can I ask you a quick question about, do towns not reevaluate for new assessments every year?
No. No, what is this, different than when the state comes up? Yeah. I gave the finance committee the 2014-15 per-share calculation and then the 2015-16. And what we did was, of those five or six categories, we went over what the changes were that the state gave us. And it dealt with two or three. One was the equalized evaluation changed, and two, it also dealt with the assessed valuations. Those were the significant changes between 2014-15 to 2015-16. Because one of the most obvious questions is, the committee and other folks don't usually get this information, meaning the per-share calculation. What is it? What is it? And I'm not, weren't expecting them to know it, but just to see the relationships, that was the key to this. Does anybody have any questions? So, with the presentation here, well, we're including in next year's budget some new personnel, some capital outlay, a budget that's going up by 1.64%. We have a number of retirements and the breakage. If you have any questions, this is the first of two. April 27th will be the final one. Upon approval by the board for this budget, I'll be submitting it to the county office, and we'll take it from there. You ready? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I think it's very cute that Tom talks about the budget to you three. I do, and to a couple, like, you know, I find it very amusing that he's talking to the three of you, and you are all looking at like, you guys are very good, you shook your head when you were supposed to.
I'll bet you dollars to dimes, okay, that you three, I didn't know as much before as you do now, as to what makes up the budget. Am I close?
I'm sorry.
Okay? Just, just.
So long percentages, I was surprised by.
Yeah, what'd you think was the biggest surprise for you?
I thought more was from like, A, State Aid.
State Aid?
Yeah.
Well, one of the things that Rivadel is, every school district has a category of which they fit into, and it's called a district factor group, with the lowest being an A and the highest being an I. Okay? And it deals with socioeconomic status. Okay? With that, Rivadel's a G.
Yes, which is a B.
Yeah, which is a B. Now, if you go to the opposite end, there's a relationship between district factor group and state aid. Okay?
Okay.
So therefore, that's why. Now, one of the questions is though, if we were fully funded, and it's just a term as to when the state developed its funding formula, I think a formula is for everything, what would Rivadel be getting? Okay? If they fully funded Rivadel? So the question is, well, what is it? And the answer is it would be close to $4 million.
So you would still need?
Yeah, there is. Well, yes, but in lieu of $666,000, Rivadel would be getting $4 million, with 3.4 more. If you have 3.4 more of state aid, you would have 3.4 million less of taxes. Right?
Okay.
Do you know we get state taxes and all that, so it's all dropped to the people?
Well, different states fund differently. We fund, we fund by property value, other states mainly fund their schools, we, you know, so.
Since we're, in talk, we had the presentation, I'd like to, as long as everybody's okay with this too, is, we go to the items for board decision, the item number, the resolution for.
We have the discussion?
Well, we make the resolution, have the discussion with it.
But the discussion's ahead of our agenda.
Then we can have the discussion first. I, I was just looking, I was making this, the suggestion of going to making the motion and having the discussion, like we would normally do, is we'd have, we would have the discussion once the, the motion's been made. If you guys would like to have the, the discussion first, I'm all for it. So I'm looking for a little.
Need a motion second? Do you have a new motion second and discussion?
Yeah, it's usually what we do, but that's why, but it's listed here as board discussion first, that's why I'm saying going, because we have seven and then eight for board decision. So usually we have, we do, we have a motion, a second, and then we discuss about the motion, which is there. So I'm asking everybody here what they'd like to, you know, you want to discuss it first? Questions and all too, and then they'll make the motion?
If somebody makes a motion, we can.
Well, you know what? I'd like to make a motion to, to number 8-1, be it resolved, be it resolved to approve school district preliminary budget for the 2015 school year as stated. Do you have a second?
Second.
You have a second. So now, discussion, because any, anything, questions, Tom, to the regards? Claudia?
What are we doing to the library at middle school?
We're doing essentially a facelift and refurbishment, making it more modern.
We're recommending it to the Board of Ed that you include this project in the budget for next year for the, for the library.
And buildings and grounds has been aware of this? Did it have, is building and grounds? Building and grounds?
Well, we've had two different committees.
Facilities, we have a, I call it building and grounds. I know you've had two different committees, I know, Doug is new to it, but this has been something that's been discussed. No?
Not, we haven't met yet, so committees have just formed in January, so we're not.
But I would think this would have been something with the old committee.
We haven't met, I don't know what else to say.
No, no, I'm saying with the old committee, I would think this would have been something that would have been discussed. Just thinking. Okay. All right, thank you.
So, among the projects, there were no changes based on the, the security report that we had? Were no like, big ideas to, to?
There were approximately, let's use a number, 35 suggestions, of which some require money and some don't require money. Most of it is in the works.
Most of it's in the works? Okay, but, I mean, this is more to Joe. But we never really discussed that as a, as a board, and I don't think it's a public item because it's, you know.
Yeah, we were, we were discussing, well, we.
We could discuss it.
We could not.
Could not, correct, correct. But we never really did discuss it, so perhaps maybe on one of the next executive, you know, so people could hear what's, what recommendations were done and what, you know. Because there were a few things that I don't know if they're being looked at, but I think were good recommendations.
You definitely have to do that exactly because.
That's fine, that's fine, I understand.
And the reason we put it public is there's something, because if we said, hey, here's, here's where there's a deficiency and all too, now we're just letting people out there and know where there may be some sort of a deficiency, so.
So yes, I believe at the time, everybody was invited to the, to the, to the security meeting, but yes, I think we should, we could follow up with that, because I know Tom did bring it up in, in budget of how some of these things were being addressed, so.
I.
I'll make a note of it.
I got two more things.
Go ahead.
Unless somebody else has something.
Do you want to?
So, Tom was very nice to provide me with the breakdown that he provided to the finance committee of how that, the athletic budget, sort of how Dennis foresees it, you know, being allocated. But some of that was, was for equipment, but we don't put it under equipment in the budget. Why is that?
Sometimes when you explain things, it still gets lost in translation. So what we have is a budget that items should be going into a different category because of the dollar values we had spoken about. We had spoken about new equipment being $2,000 or greater.
Okay.
Okay? And sometimes people misconstrue items that the dollar value, they don't go.
So if you bought a, like, $2,000 worth of golf balls, they look at it as like, you know.
Well, it is a supply.
That is why, I'm sorry, then that wasn't, that wasn't.
It's $2,000 per unit, and therefore what you may, some people may construe is, as something simple as new uniforms, if each one is $50, in aggregate, it's $3,000.
Right.
But it's technically a supply of that new equipment.
And then last is, it is on the agenda tonight as a, a change in the way that the art department is doing their courses, but it's also partially the budget. And over the last two budget cycles, the art department personnel is shrinking by 1.5 personnel, or one and a half personnel. And they're changing the way that the classes will be full year instead of half-year offerings. And there are a variety of factors that go into that that I, I understand, but I am very concerned that sometimes when you lose things, they don't ever come back. And besides the fact that art is a requirement for all of our students, it's also leads to so many other good skills that the common core is trying to instill in the problem solving and, and in order of operation, and all these other skills that are laying into regular curriculum. You can Google anything about art and education and it'll tell you that, you know, art education leads to better test scores, better language arts, all of that. I don't, you know, need to reiterate that, but I really would urge the administration to spend some time, some additional time, because I know that they worked very hard with the art department, and I don't want to indicate that they didn't. Some additional time looking at other areas that we might be able to add in the future that students would be desiring to subscribe to, and perhaps our personnel either doesn't have that expertise, but we could hire some personnel who does.
You have some questions, Tom?
You guys are welcome to, I know you asked a question before, it'll, just to, you guys are part of the board, just making sure. All right. Okay, sure. All right, Tom, can I get a rule call on item number 8-1, which is the preliminary budget? Again, as you mentioned, it's preliminary, it goes up to the board, the county office, and then, what is it, April 27th, we go down to final budget. So something could possibly change between now and then, but it's more about the makeup of the budget as opposed to the dollar values.
Claudia?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes, and I guess I'd also like to thank the budget committee, and actually, Tom, you and all the administration for what, because it is a long process, so. Thank you. And now, if we could actually then jump back up to Romanu 5, the student ever report.
Okay, so, the spring musical, Fiddler on the Roof, is on March 26th, 27th, and 28th. And as Mr. Nelson said earlier, Coach Mike Urso was named by NewJersey.com State Track Coach of the Year.
Due to the weather experienced last Thursday, this senior social that was originally scheduled for the Chelsea Piers is now this Thursday, same time, same place. The park testing is now conceded today, it's ended, and we'll go back to our schedule tomorrow. And middle school has their semi-formal dance on March 13th at 6 o'clock in gym.
Also this week, spring sports officially started, and also in sports news, the all-county and all-state sports honors list were released, and also for seniors, the local scholarship list was released along with the Rivadel application.
And that is the end of our report.
This is the president's report. Thank goodness, welcome spring, because with spring, like you said, you guys mentioned the spring sports, the musical, prom, socials, and one of the things, I guess I wanted to mention, I guess for, for public knowledge and all too, is the interact club actually puts on a, a prom for the seniors and all too, so I'm not sure exactly when that is and all too, but again, it's just, it's a nice thing that the students do for the community. Did also want to, I guess, kind of make a public urging, if you will, to, that the curriculum committee was brought a, an opportu, and when I say an opportunity, an idea by a parent in the district about a possible class opportunity type of thing, and I guess I'm just urging people that, you know, if you're not coming to a meeting and all too, even if you want to, is, you know, the principals, if there's something that you think could happen and all too, make the suggestion. You know, it even goes down to students as well. So if there's a class that you've read about, some other district or something like that, that, hey, if we could possibly run something or do something like that, it's what we do. It's, you know, part of our mission statement to, to work with the community and find out what the community wants. So I kind of, I want to say urge people because, you know, this one opportunity that came forward, sounds exciting, it may or may not happen, but at least we're going to look into it. So I guess that's my report of, you know, reaching out, people please. We, we welcome any, any kind of suggestions that are out there. So, and that concludes my report.
I just have a couple of quick items to mention, and I'm going to ask Rob to just talk a little bit about the performance that not only you, but your three colleagues did at our recent track meet, so that, you know, I think it's, I often get to announce and mangle all the names of the kids that I announce, and it's rare that I get them here to have the ability to do it, so I'm going to pass it off, so.
I thought they were part of the night, so they have to name it.
So, like, one of the competitions that I had at Easterns in the Armory in New York City was, it was myself, Justin Fernandez, and then Will and Colindalee. It was a 4x800, and we ended up winning like the Eastern region, qualified for Penn, it was a school record, first in all county, so, fun to do. You can watch it online if anyone is interested.
And as you may recall, Rob and his cohorts were mentioned very promptly in an article that was in the Record regarding reaching out to some of our disadvantaged students. I want to also extend thank you to, to you and your colleagues for taking care of that. Carrie, I'm going to leave you out of this for a second, but at the same time, I think it's important for us to recognize our valedictorian for the school year, Matt Guido. His mother is going to give, make something for me from the home, because I mentioned that tonight. As I think Rob mentioned, we, we concluded the park testing at the high school today. We managed to leverage the technology that we have, and we're able to complete the vast majority of the testing in three days. Obviously, one day was interrupted because of the snow that occurred on Thursday of last week. We began the testing for the park in the middle school today, and essentially what's happening is, over this week that we have now, we will cycle the seventh grade through in two, if you will, sections, and then the following week, it'll be the eighth grade will cycle through. Very happy to report that we had a very limited number of refusals of people who wanted to take the exam. Most of the reasons that people presented, I had 14, just overall, across the whole district, but the final number won't be determined until we actually finish the testing window and go through the process of closing up, up what we have. But most of the reasons of the 14 that I got were, were, you know, extremely reasonable regarding a particular situation that a student had. We were fortunate that we did not see the mass situations that are occurring in some other school districts, which keep getting some press as we go through here. I want to thank not only the students who are going through the process, but the parents for being very reasonable and supportive of it, because while I do have certain reservations about the exam in general, I am hopeful that we will receive some information back that will make us, or give us the opportunity to improve instruction and to move forward. Whether it'll occur for the next school year or thereafter, I don't know. However, it's very important for us all to understand that the current eighth grade and below are the first students that will be required to pass a portion of park in high school for their graduation responsibility. At this point, that's the, that's the plan that we know. The current seniors have already met their requirement. So it's the juniors, the sophomores, and the freshmen that are in right now that have a matrix approach to satisfying the state testing requirement. But the current eighth grade, seventh, and down into the elementary districts, the plan right now that we understand is that they have to pass a piece of the park, either the math, the math and the language arts portion, once during that three-year period. That's why I say a piece of the park. They have to, if you will, achieve a cutoff score that's, that puts them in a proficient range at least once during their high school career. We don't know what that's going to be, because we don't know what the cutoff scores are. We don't anticipate getting those until October. But I do think that the more students that participated in it, not just at Riverdale, but statewide, and then hopefully in the other nine states that are, and the District of Columbia that are currently taking park, will provide a good database in order for us to move forward. I did mention to you snow. Unfortunately, we were in a situation where we used the last of our three snow days on last Thursday. So there are no more inclement weather days in the calendar. Should we have another inclement weather day or some other interruption to the schedule, we're looking at the interrupting the April break. And it's counting backwards from the Friday, the last, the second Friday. We do have two Fridays off in the April break, so it's the second Friday coming backward. I have, on, on very good indication from one of the seventh grade students that I was talking to today, that Mr. Fletcher, there will be no more snow for the rest of the year. So based upon her, her assessment, I'm very confident that we'll be able to, to survive the rest of the school year. But as it stands right now, we're out of snow days, or inclement weather days, I should say. And we just hope that we don't have any further interruption to our program as we go forward. So no long Memorial Day, but we're all looking forward to getting through the April period, yes.
Okay, so, we're out of snow days, inclement weather days.
Yep.
And let's just say, for argument's sake, something bad happens in May, and we have to shut down the building. Then what happens? Like, what will happen? Will we bring the kids back on the twenty first, like the twenty third, or whatever those dates are, or?
Well, there, so, the answer to your question is, we have a responsibility to have one hundred eighty days of student contact.
Right.
And in, in my thirty-odd years of being involved in schools, the state legislature, it is a legislative responsibility to adjust that. They have never done that. So, and they didn't do it during Hurricane Sandy, so, but they do have the opportunity to provide individual waivers. So there are some school districts that were so devastated during Sandy that they got a waiver to meet that one hundred eighty day requirement while they were relocating students and doing other stuff. So absent something extraordinary, we would have to modify the end of the school year.
We will.
Yeah?
Now, let's just, let's just say for argument's sake, like the roof collapses. I know that's going to freak you out. But the roof collapses here, but not at the middle school. So our middle school kids get to go.
Correct.
And then the high school kids have to come back?
Yeah, we've been in that situation before, where we've had power interruptions.
Any, any roof thing will come.
So if the bees twist through and break the roof.
No bees.
So wait, I have.
Yes.
Hannah, have a question.
Yeah.
So theoretically, when the park is in place, if it still exists, you could pass it as a freshman and be done with your high school requirement?
The way that the language is written right now, they have to pass the exam at least once during their high school experience. So the answer will be yes.
Can I just make a sport comment?
Sure.
Okay. So one of our junior wrestlers, I'm sorry, one of our wrestlers who is a junior.
Job?
Yes.
Yep.
Was it on your report, I'm sorry?
No.
Joe Long Lombardi placed in the States. He placed eighth, I believe, in the States. And to, and we've had some exceptional wrestlers always, and certainly in the last several years. But to tell you, I think the last time, you can look on the banner in the gym, the last time we had somebody placed was maybe two thousand and six, maybe two thousand and eight. So it's, it is quite a feat, and he probably wrestled about eight matches in order to, to get to that moment. And then, I was going to say excluding the two tournaments, he also had to place top three in, in order to get to go to States. So congratulations to him. It is, and he's got another year to try and.
Yes, he does.
Repeat or better it.
And that's it for me.
Which brings us to committee reports on budget finance.
Our most recent meeting was March second. And in attendance were, besides myself, Al, Alan, and Joe, along with Patrick and Tom. And areas that we discussed and questions were posed and responded to include, included, but we're not limited to additional adjustments in the budget, proposed budget, cuts, so to speak, staff adjustments, capital areas, review of budget worksheets, worksheets by program, special revenue, and the tax levy, levy computation. And again, as was previously mentioned tonight, the timetable with the final budget would be approval, pending approval would be April twenty seventh. That's it.
Campus facilities, Alan, he couldn't be here tonight, so I don't know, and they haven't met, so. Some, some things were met, talked about during budget and finance, because there's at least two, two members that are there. Community relations?
I'm sure we'll have our first meeting next month.
Okay. Curriculum, tri-district?
We met at our last meeting. We went over curricula updates. STEM seven and eight is going to be done by the end of the year. Computer programming, medicine and literature, nutrition and wellness, law, and international business is all going to be done. We discussed the changes in the art department courses for this upcoming school year. Math, we have some name changes for NCAA eligibility. We are still having a rich discussion about graduation requirements. That's not funny.
Your turn of phrase is funny.
Yes, right?
Your turn of phrase, shall we say?
Okay. We also, Joe had alluded to a course from a parent who came in and spoke to Lorraine. But we're looking to possibly send a teacher to do some educational training on a cybersecurity course.
Correct.
We talked about the CUSAC requirement letter that reflects twenty-first century and interdisciplinary needs for the upcoming CUSAC in the future, just but more like housekeeping. We talked about professional development. Middle school's going to do research for today. High school's going to do the peer receptive program, and middle school and high school benchmarks. And Patrick is also having an educational philosophy discussion with his administrators. I'm sure that is rich too. That discussion is very rich, I'm sure. And that's about it. I think I covered everything. Done.
I think so. Policy governance?
Policy met this evening, and we are, we went over some changes in several of the policies. One surrounding staff use of internet, social media in relation to the students. One was brand-new administering medication. Was that the brand-new one?
The ability to have it, I'm saying, and not assigned to somebody is a new part.
Yes, so, so the state of New Jersey changed its regulations, and you are now permitted to have unassigned epinephrine in your building for circumstances in which a, a professional of name, and there's a few of them, would feel that it is needed. Talked about concussion management, and then emergency and disaster, home instruction, and long-range facility planning regulation. And that one was basically almost entirely new, and it has to do with the changes in the reporting of it from the state. And so they will be coming forward as they're just kind of cleaned up and ready to come forward. And then we also discussed a change in policy to policy ninety-one thirty, which is about board reporting for committees.
For board committees.
Board committees, and how they report, as we are doing this evening. In the policy currently, it has a requirement that you're reporting at the meeting, but there'll also be a written report in which there's an exhibit for it in the, in the policy manual. And we will be bringing forward a motion to remove the exhibit from the policy. But not, that will not be at this meeting. It will probably be at the next.
If I could add, just to add a little point to that, is one thinks is, because of the fact that eliminating that report is not necessarily, because I know as I, as I look around with people giving the reports, they're going back to their notes and all too, so you are taking minutes, similar to a situation like, one of the things we discussed was, there was a meeting tonight. And then from the top, committee meeting right to there is, I can't have a written report and all too. And then by the time we have another meeting and all too, is, and I mentioned it to Stephanie, was, jeez, if we have the written report, once the minutes come out and all too, we have, we have them documented. So the idea is, is definitely take written notes there. There's not a requirement now. That's, this is the big thing. There's no requirement, because people weren't necessarily following it anyway, and some of it had to do with timing, so. I think it's a, it's a good move. Which do we have, the one item there? So right now then is, can I have a motion on the consent agenda items?
Sound led.
All right, so Stephanie, seconded by Claudia. Discussion on any of the consent agenda items? Seeing as there is none, Tom, rule call on the consent agenda?
Claudia?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
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 Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Jim.
Yes. Which brings us to our items for board discussion, old business, new business. I had something, but if anybody had something first?
I don't have anything. I said everything I have to say.
I have.
Okay.
Okay. So next year for the park exam, as we know it's not going away technically, and it was done very well how it was set up here. And I do have a senior, and he was quite happy to stay home every day until twelve-twenty. But I was thinking, and I know every junior here is going to hate me, and I'm really sorry, Kyle, because you'll hate me too. I was thinking next year.
It's a good thought.
It's a good thought, right?
It's a thought to be hated.
It was a good thought. Could we bring our seniors in, not at like eight-thirty or anything, maybe like ten? And maybe we could have like lectures for them for a variety of things? Because I know from time to time, things come our way. And one of the things that we always hear is, it's so hard to get the senior class together. It's so hard, Lorraine has a hard time like with scheduling and everything to have speakers come in. This would be a great opportunity for us to use this for our seniors. You know, the, what's the name of the thing that came in? I can't remember. We've been complaining to you, not complained, but we've been discussing with you that we wanted to roll out to everybody.
With the teen pep now?
Teen pep, like, yeah. Like those type of things would be great for everybody to have.
We can certainly look into modifying the schedule for seniors, yeah.
Okay. I'm really sorry, Kyle. Oh, I did, I did actually have.
No.
I only said we'll look into.
That's his brush-off. Did he write it down? Wait, did he write it down?
I did.
I forgot. So the parks happening again, right, in the same school year?
Yes, the end-of-year exam will take place the end of April. Yes.
The end of April?
Yeah.
So I'm sure, I'm sure there was no thought given, not on your, on the Department of Ed, but that leaves, that leaves the seniors basically with less instruction leading into the APs. Or let me rephrase that, because there are juniors that take APs. That leaves people who are taking AP courses statewide with less instruction leading into it.
Yes.
And they'll have a modified schedule again.
Well, it's different. The end-of-year exam is only four sections, not five. They're different lengths, so we're still working on, working that piece out. I don't think it's going to be as disruptive as it was before. But could there be some interruption? Sure, there could, sure.
And that's because they've learned so much from proceeding a month and a half or two months.
When everybody has spring break as well.
Yeah.
I know you really don't want to come. Make it, make it a statement.
Anybody else?
Oh, yeah. Guidance?
I think it would be. I think it'd be really good if guidance was proactive and possibly did a workshop, because they're changing the SAT, the ACT, and the PSAT. Some districts in neighboring towns are doing this, and I think it would be helpful for our students and their families, for these children that are taking these exams, to hear about the changes that are coming down the pike.
Yeah, I, my first reaction is I think we did some stuff already, but I'll have to take a look and see how formalized it was.
Okay. And then going back to park, because it is like one of my favorite things to talk about. And Tom, this is more for you, I think. But could you find out how much we have spent on preparing for park for me? Could you?
Yeah, yes. The answer is yes.
Can I just comment on that too? Because it was part of the thing that was brought up during the budget meeting and all too, was can you put a number on it? And there's certain things that I even, I even commented in my own household, was like, jeez, one of the benefits we have with the one-to-one.
Right.
And you have, is, is some districts where they said, oh, we had to spend a million dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars. We were somewhat ahead of the curve because of the fact we had that. So there's some soft costs and all too that might not be. So when we ask for that from Tom, is keep that in mind.
Right.
Or Tom, if you could kind of even throw a value at certain things that maybe we've done.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because there was even some network things that were done.
Right.
So.
And I just, I just would like, I would just like a number, because I don't think people really realize that this is an unfunded mandate that has been like, been on our laps to take care of. And yes, we are very fortunate that we do have a one-to-one laptop initiative up here at the high school, and that the middle school is so well-stocked with technology. But, you know, compared to other districts who like, you know, have gotten like, you know, thrown over the coals, we're in better shape. But I still would just like to know how much money we've spent on this.
Because that's why I said, if we could figure out a number that, if we had to buy technology to be able to do this, can you throw even a number at that?
Right.
That would be, that'd be good to know.
And my last park question. Pat, you had said before that if you pay, like, so in other words, you just have to, you take park, like, so it's seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. And the requirement as of now is you only need to pass one section. So let's, one section of each, right, right. So let's just say for argument's sake, you pass it as a freshman. Then do you have to take it as a sophomore or a junior?
Under the current rules, the answer is yes.
You just don't have to pass it.
And I just want to, I just want to be careful.
Yes.
Just as Tom pointed out to you, that the term equipment, we have different understandings of it. The term passing is, is important. Passing doesn't mean A, B, C, D in the traditional sense that we have. It means that the state will go through a norming process to create a cutoff score, and that you have to get that cutoff score or above to be considered proficient.
Right, no, that I understand.
Okay. I just want everybody to understand, because you're not, it doesn't go into your grade point average.
Right.
It doesn't go into your, your, your end of, I'm sorry, your final grade for the year in the courses that you're in, right now. We'll see what happens, but it doesn't go into that, it doesn't figure into that.
Anybody?
One quick question, 'cause we're talking about technology. Currently, the laptops that the kids bring home from school are locked down, which I understand. But two things that I've seen is, one, you can't print at home without emailing to yourself. And I'm just wondering if there's any other workaround for that? 'Cause it's, it's an inconvenience. And two, have we looked at any other, any other ways of storing the kids' work or documents when they're not in school? So if they save something to like the network drive and they come home, they can't access it. So with all, with all the technology out there, like, you know, Google, you know, cloud-based drives and so forth, have we investigated any of that stuff?
Right before you said cloud-based, you said they can't access.
My, my understanding, maybe things have changed. I know when, when my older son was first in the school, like, if there was something that he saved on the.
Wide drive.
School's net, network, whatever, wherever that is. If he didn't copy it to his laptop or to a thumb drive, which my understanding is you're not technically supposed to be using, that you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have access at home then.
Yeah, I think recently though, and also I think what you also had your purchases in W drive, you couldn't access that from home.
Right.
It's way too old to teach your documents and stuff you might need for a class. I think actually beginning of this year, they did change it.
And i- it's much better, I think, a lot more convenient. So I think that's a good point. Just to make sure that that's like.
The printing, I know that's, I've had that issue.
It drives me insane, 'cause you can't, you can't install the print driver so that they can print at home. I wonder if there's a way to unlock that without opening up Pandora's box.
I don't know.
I think that's, that's part of the problem is open up Pandora's box.
Oh, did I make, did I make the, did I make the, did I make the binder?
Yes, but it doesn't have an asterisk next to it. Like the ones.
You know what, that's a good thing. The asterisks are a bad thing. As I put the asterisk next to it now. I, I'd like to bring up an old business item and just see if there's, if we wanna have further discussion is at our last meeting, Nancy was here. We had somebody else before talk about strategic planning or community planning. I said, I just didn't know if we, bring it up for discussion. I know we've had two presentations where people talked and all too, whether or not we wanna pursue that. And I guess I'm opening it up to, for the board for discussion on that because, you know, like I said, people did take the time to come and all too. I'd like to be able to, one of two things. Either tell them thanks but no thanks, or tell them that we're interested and trying to figure out what we, if we wanna take next steps. So Stephanie?
Well, after having heard all of the process and, and I'm one of the people that was pushing for something to begin with, I, I can't foresee entering into either one of those processes without us as a board knowing for ourselves what our vision is. I mean, it's, it's nice to take the, the feedback from the public, but I think we should know, we are, we're the publicly elected officials and I kind of think we should, we should have an idea of, of where it is that we see in relation with our administration and what their thoughts are before we could even engage in such an exercise. So I, I would think that we would be better served having a like four-hour board retreat in which sort of we go through that process that they were talking about to kind of find where it is that we wanna be in the next three to five years.
When you say that, would you say with a guided process? Would you say a board retreat? Because you just said we'd, we'd go through that. I just make sure.
I think, I think just like we do our regular planning, I think it, I think anything like that needs to be a guy. Just to come up with our goals, we need a guided process, you know, 'cause you need somebody to be sort of, to be writing, to be running from board to board and writing it down and sticking it up on a wall and, and, and then, and then compiling that, that data into something that is, is tangible and, you know, 'cause you'll leave, you'll leave, you know, whether it be two hours or four hours, you'll be bleary eyed from all the things and you'll be like, what did we actually decide on?
But may I ask a question? So in your thought process, in both the strategic planning process from the school boards, which is more comprehensive than the community planning process that was presented by Nancy Stern, both of those had a very significant and organized stakeholder process, shall we say, that's, that's outside the board. So are you suggesting that the board needs to have its own planning process just by itself before we could go?
Before we could even discuss whether we want it?
Correct.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Which would mean that if, whether school boards led the process or Susa Stern led the process, we would take a, a condensation of the things that they talked about and have the board participate in that.
That is what I'm saying.
Okay. I just wanted, yeah, go ahead.
Does school boards, doesn't it, does it count towards our hours?
Anything we do with school boards will count towards hours. I mean, I, I can't say for, I'm, I'm making a statement, but I, I don't, I, I don't see why it wouldn't because like goal setting, that was one of the things that I do know that was, you know, one of our goals and all too is to continue to be, you know, a, certified board. And part of that is taking sessions with school boards or, or making sure that everybody on, on the, the board is keeping up with their board education. So I don't see why not, 'cause the goal setting is.
Right.
I don't see why something like that couldn't be, but I don't know if that's actually.
Well, yeah, 'cause it's not a thing that they.
Exactly.
Do.
That might be.
They do the strategic planning type thing, do they, like, is there?
I'd have to ask. I'd have to ask, that's why I, I was trying to get clarity on what it is that you were talking about.
I mean, Al likes us and we are special.
You like what?
I said Al likes us and we are special.
Oh, Al, yeah. Okay.
I mean that we'd have to talk to them about, about that, but.
Years past, I was involved in two strategic plans as administrator. Very comprehensive one by school boards and also with Nancy and Kathy, an abbreviated version. And it was a very easy to have people participate. I had the mayor, some council members of, of where the district was attend. We had a, a four-hour Saturday session and everybody worked together. I respect where you're coming from, by the way, I don't wanna be so cowardly, but I saw, I have a different perspective of the outcome. You're getting, you're getting a pulse for what the community, what's out there of the representatives who attend. And the SOP is the standard operational procedure, are the big post-it notes that goes no matter who you have. But you, you're really picking the brains and thought processes of so many people for the board to focus, consolidate, and possibly consider for future board goals, administrative goals, et cetera, district goals. I'm an advocate obviously of, of that process, especially the abbreviated one. My concern was, and Nancy seemed to address it, was with all of these new changes coming from the State Department of Ed, is it gonna put a strain on getting the administrative job done, having known what it was in the past, but it's a lot more involved now presently. And she seemed to think that would be okay with the process. But, so I'm, I take a different view, having experience too. But I like the abbreviated community one. Again, we have a chance to bring the public in and see what the thoughts are. In a formal, but informal, if I could use a both, intergenerally process.
See, you know what, this is where I was conflicted, if I could. Is, is on that. I like, personally, I like the abbreviated one first because again, you kinda, you, you, as you say, you kinda get the pulse. But what I didn't, you know, and no disrespect to, to Nancy at the time, was I guess what I was trying to say is the question I asked of her is, okay, you get all this information and you now, you, you've got it and say, okay, this is the plan. Well, you can't always do everything you want. It seemed like, and, you know, it was kind of what Stephanie asked her, so it's kind of contradictory, is there's a part of me that says, if you're gonna do it, do it like you just said to me, with the public, but you say, you know, to try to get the information and all too, but then you turn around and you say, you know what, as the board, we don't think that we can either do this or, you know, we can get your ideas, but you know what, going forward, it's not, not something that we can conceivably either believe in and do or financially couldn't do. On the other side and all too, there is a part of me that says, you know what, is we, we are elected officials. And unfortunately, it's not like some other elected officials where there's a bunch of debates and all going on, so people can kind of get your philosophies, but we are elected officials that people should say, okay, I, I put my trust in you, you vote for a president and all too, they lay out their plans and all too, but you know what, then they change them. So I, to, to your point, Stephanie, I think sometimes, you know what, maybe we don't need to go through that process because of the fact that, you know what, we have been entrusted to, to do our jobs. So I don't, I'm, that's why I'm, I wanted to throw it out there, get some more opinion as well, 'cause I'm kind of both sides. You know, I, I, the one thing I could, I definitely can, in my mind agree on is I like the short one, because it just seems like you, you're gonna get, you're gonna achieve the same goal without spending months and months in time to get to where you're gonna go, so.
I'm like, I, I like Stephanie's idea. I do like, I like the fact that if we're gonna go ahead and do anything, it should be the shorter condensed version and not because of time and our commitment. It's just, I feel like in four hours, you can get an idea of what your community wants as opposed to like four weekends.
Oh, that's why I agree.
But I do kind of feel we are a very young and inexperienced board and a lot of us have been bored here for various reasons. And I kind of think it would almost be helpful for us to have that, like a little one-on-one and like a little training just to see kind of like where we see ourselves as a board of education and then have us then go and take that next step and go to a Nancy or an Al and do something like on a Saturday where, you know, like this is the Riverdale Board of Education and this is what we feel. We're from two communities, there's nine of us sitting here. We don't all have the same objectives and goals for being here. Some of us have been brought here for different reasons to sit on a board of education, but these are our reasons and these are the things that we do agree with and we want your input. I would think it would be better if we all found out why we're all here first and work on ourselves before we start working on this building and this district. I really do. I think, I think we need a lot of education first before we can go and make a very, very large commitment back to the community.
I also think you, you have to know what you wanna do with the information.
That's the biggest thing.
I, I, I've sat through these things in, in work and you get all this, you get the, you know, you get this book of not, you know, knowledge that sits on a shelf, that people read through once and it's not. And I'm not saying you have to implement everything, but what's the end game? You know, where, if, if you're gonna go through this process with the community, then we have to know, I think, what we wanna do with that information, whatever that information is, once we, once we ha, get it, not just go through a process and then go, okay, great, we have it and, you know, what are we, what are we using it for?
Right.
Is it, is it to plan, is it to plan what the future of this district is, you know, or something else? I'm not sure.
I guess then what I'm hearing is, is, is that, that, no decision on anything with any of the, the people, it's more about doing a board retreat.
Would it hurt if you, like, went to the public first and then did the board retreat so you could kind of bring that in? Do you see what I'm saying?
I do, right. And that's what I think we're talking about, is trying to get a little bit of an idea. I guess I could see both sides of it. And to your point, Doug, there's nowhere you wanna go with it. I think you need some information of, to be able to make that decision.
Well, you, I mean, are you ultimately going to the community with some idea of where the board wants to take the school district and getting feedback on that on various topics? Or is it purely just getting feedback, whatever that feedback is, you know, kind of unfiltered, you know?
I agree with you.
And not more focused, right?
Is the end game, is you trying to get as much information from the public or that's where you gotta, you know, support the, the horse before the cart?
Well, in looking at what Nancy gave us last time, it's, it's not an information gathering session. It's a, it's a session in which you come out with, with ideas to put in action. And then it's, the board can choose or not to choose to do that, but it is, it is specific, codified ideas. I mean, if you look, and we all did, we were all able to look at those reports. I mean, there was one town where it was full-day kindergarten, it was increasing their gifted education, it was, you know, implementing this. It wa, you know, there are specific targeted ideas that again, may not be financially feasible or in turn may be in a total opposite direction of, of how the board planned, you know, the, the school to be going or the district to be going or the administration, you know? And so there's nothing I hate more than asking my opinion, like seriously asking my opinion and then totally ignoring it. Right. I, I, and, and to go out to the community and potentially do that, what is, I, I think is problematic.
But if they come back with four goals, you know, maybe we can't tackle all four, but if we can implement two of the goals.
But what if we don't agree? That's what I'm saying. We don't know, what if we don't agree, like, if we don't know where we wanna go, how can we go out there and then come back and, and we say as, as board members? Because while we are young, we all, you know, have decent enough experience in either education or in sitting on a board or participating in the educational process as a parent, a community member, you know, to, to bring to the table a, a, a rich, the word in the night, a rich discussion. And so I think, I, I don't, I think to not have some idea in our own mind and not to, not to sway the conversation that we might have with the public, but to, see, are we totally in, in, you know, concert with the public? Are we in concert with the public on certain things? Or are we totally in one direction and the public's in, completely in another? You know, I think, I just think it's a mistake to go through that process to possibly, you know, have it all come back and us go, this is not at all what we want.
I'd like, the idea of a board retreat is good. Again, what I remembered, and things change, I'm sure they could be tailored different ways, is that if a board collectively has a lot of, if I could say, I'll say politely, he-cups, a lot of bumps in the road, a retreat would be established to iron out any of the speed bumps in the road and try to get a common direction or goals. I think we've already established goals that we're, we have on paper and we do that on an annual basis. But I've seen where there's some feuding going on and the retreat was, was designed to air everything and try to pull in the same direction. But I'm sure the agenda could be changed for a retreat if we wanted to make it a different agenda.
We had Al come once where we played like those games. Remember?
It was like, we, I was calling ourselves like the dream team and we went around and we did certain different things. It was one of the things that we were doing to become certified. I forget what it was called. But if possibly we could get Al to come in and maybe do that and maybe like elaborate and enhance it a little bit more, I think that might start to like flesh out some information from us as a board.
Do you want to reach out to him? Tell him kind of what the discussion is? Get some feedback? I guess the other thing, try to get a little feedback too, just from Nancy too, just how, how, you know, just have a discussion. So I think her, her number was in there, right?
I got some further information, sure. With your, your direction. Bring it back.
Like I said, it's just, because I, I almost feel like just what you said, Stephanie, is to, to ask people for their opinion, to ask people to come in and then, and then just leave them hanging there, we're not doing anything. I'd either like to say thank you but no thanks or, you know, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna go in this direction and all too, I just don't, I feel like we're just leaving them, leaving them there. too. I just don't, I feel like we're just leaving them, leaving them there. That's just my own personal. So I'd like to at least kind of come up with something to say, thanks but no thanks, or, so, that's just my own two cents. Anything else? Anybody? With that, any public comments? Seeing as there are no public comments, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?